This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular June 16th, 2025 council meeting. I'll call it to order at 6:30 PM. All right, so the pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Okay, anyone want to make a motion to approve the agenda as written? So moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Webb, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carried. Mayor's report, I don't have anything. Guess we're gonna have to postpone the citizen month till next month. So we'll do that, take care of that next month. Any presentations tonight? None? Any council or committee meeting reports? Okay. We'll move right into the public hearing of PA 25-01. I will call that to order and then declare a continuance on that. So I will call that public hearing to order at 6:32 PM. On June 13th, 2025, I will move that this land use hearing be continued to July 21st, 2025 at 6:30 PM at 1001 Bridge Street, Renonia, Oregon 97064, due to conflicting hearing date notices. I am requesting this continuance in order to allow for sufficient hearing notice for affected citizens.
Just one clarification.
Sure.
Today's July 16th, not the 13th?
June 16th.
June 13th, not the 13th.
Thank you, Susan.
Whatever day it is and whatever month. It's summer, what?
Thank you.
Sorry, just one.
And so this is probably the shortest public hearing we've ever had in this city.
I'll second that motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, motion carried. Close this public hearing at 6:33.
Continue, you're not closing.
Oh, continue, okay. Topics on the floor tonight?
I have two.
Okay.
And Steve Weller.
Two things, one is just had a recent experience at the transfer station. And I did not get a chance to call Josette today because I was busy working too. But I think my brother would agree with this as well. We made a trip down there and I don't go very often. But we went and we found out there is a tremendous amount of things that you cannot take to the transfer station to be delivered, to be dumped and gotten rid of. And so what I'm gonna ask the council to do is direct staff to work with waste management to inform the public better by a good newspaper article that says what you can take and what you cannot take. Just a simple example is my mom had, oh, several boxes of fruit jars. They don't want glass. Take them. So they got them anyway. Just put it that way. But it is, it's frustrating when you spend all the time to prepare and take to pick up loads of stuff that you think you're able to get rid of and then you get there and find out you can't dispose of it. The other thing can be addressed to administration and this gentleman, I believe, was the officer that helped me out last week. We had a vehicle that was doing a lot of serious hard driving up and down. It went up Keyzey Road, it came back in Keyzey Road. It was all over town and it was loud. Some of you may have seen it, it's a van for pickup. And anyway, needless to say, I would like to see a little more, I'm not against these guys, but some effort be put forth to try and slow some of these people down. This individual, have they not, I think you did contact it.
I did not.
You did not, okay. If this individual isn't slowed down, he's eventually going to kill somebody or kill himself or multiple. So give that to law enforcement to look for this. It's ready for pickup and I'm sure people in town know who I'm talking about. It's been seen quite a number of times, but it definitely, definitely needs some attention by law enforcement. I know this gentleman, he made contact with me at my home and so I appreciate that. But good effort, just needs to be more of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Do one question.
Sure.
Were you allowed, there was glass recycling, but you'd have to take them apart and throw them in the recycling?
We would have had, they didn't even act like they had any glass recycling. There was a serious language barrier there that day. I could see that with the individuals that were there. I don't speak Spanish and I have a hard time when somebody's not speaking clear fluent English. It's difficult.
Okay.
And we were, both of them, Dennis and I, were really surprised. They won't take TVs, won't take monitors off of it. You have to take all that stuff to St. Helens to get rid of it.
Yeah, because it goes on different.
And when you figure out what you're paying per load to get rid of it, it's like, wow, this is kind of spinning. I think we had just taken it all to kill.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Solow.
Okay, Amy.
Amy Solow, 78 G Street. I just wanted to bring to the attention of you guys the issues that I personally and other people are having with loose dogs in the community. I walk a lot and I'm feeling pretty landlocked right now as to where I can safely walk our dog who is on a leash. My daughter has also had problems, has filed two police reports because of Gary Meyer's dogs down here that have come across the highway after her and her dog. I, well, actually I didn't make the phone call, but Memorial Day I was walking and this is also a dog that is out constantly up toward the Mel Pond. Big brown dog, everybody's probably seen him if you've been around. He's not very friendly. I went into some neighbor's yard to just get to a safe place and they called down emergency. But it's just really frustrating. I've lived here for a long time. I'd like to be able to just go about my business and walk safely and it's not safe. I understand that we have one animal control person and Roger isn't here all the time, but something has got to be done. Citations or something to get people to be responsible is really all I think anybody's asking. But I'm feeling pretty frustrated. I know my daughter's been in contact with law enforcement since she filed the reports, but to be honest, like, we don't know anything. I don't, his dogs are still out on a pretty regular basis. If you drive by, you see him on the sidewalk or rolling freely. And I'm just asking that somebody, please put some attention towards this matter so that people can be safe. Pretty simple.
Thank you.
Hopefully we'll see some changes.
Can I raise a question?
Go ahead, Dan.
Is there, can you assist the dog control?
I honestly. Yeah, I believe so. I honestly would like to.
Because how often does he?
So we had a meeting with the judge and Roger and Sergeant and myself. We're beefing up the parks rules to really close down the voice command, control wording that's in our current parks rules. And it says they have to be on a leash or by voice command, under control. And a lot of people say, oh, I have control of my dog. No, you don't. And we did talk about there's dogs that are up here on this corner. There is the dog we know about that goes to the lake that we're dealing with. And then we know about the ones at Spencer Park. So we're working on it to get more teeth for the law enforcement to just confiscate a dog and write a $500 citation.
I mean, I think that's gotta be the best avenue to get people's attention is the right citations.
Yeah.
When dogs are crossing Highway 47 to get to whoever is walking, that's a problem.
Yeah, we agree.
And I mean, you throw some citations at people, maybe they will start being more responsible with their animals.
Yeah, and Roger went, Sergeant Carnahan, exactly what they could cite based on it. So they should be starting to do that now when it's not in the park. The park one, we have to beef up the rules through council action and redoing that ordinance, which we're working on.
Well, to be honest, I mean, I feel like the park is the least of the town's worry.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the park is a great place for somebody to go down there to catch with their dog. And most of, I have not had a problem with dogs down there because people are there with their dogs. They're being responsible, but it's the people that just, I mean.
The dog gets out and they aren't even paying attention.
Well, there's, I mean, it's all over. I mean, I can't, I can't tell you the amount of times that I either had to turn around, walk a different route, walk an extra couple of miles to get away from a loose dog, call my husband to pick me up. I mean, these are things that happen on a pretty regular basis because there is so much of this happening. So.
Have any of them been aggressive toward?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, Gary's dogs were very aggressive. Very aggressive and that big brown one has been aggressive. He was not super aggressive the last time, but he wouldn't leave us alone. He came right to us and would not leave us alone. I had to cross back across the highway and I'm, I'm careful. Like I already crossed over to the other side of the road for fear that that dog might be out. So I zigzag over there to the other side of the highway on the other sidewalk. And then, so the last time that happened, we were on the opposite side. He came across to us, then I went back to the other side. He's right there with us. I went into some neighbor's yard and they were thankfully nice to me and not mad at me for being on the property, but, and they were the ones that called dispatch. But nobody actually did, they gave them all my information, but I didn't hear from anybody about it. So just, just a problem.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda for acceptance, Parks Committee meeting minutes for April 2025.
I move to approve consent agenda for acceptance.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Weller, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda for approval, City Council meeting minutes for June 2nd, 2025.
I'll move.
Go ahead.
I'll move to accept the consent agenda for approval.
So moved by Councilor Webb, is there a second? Second. Seconded by Councilor Norman, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, none opposed, motion carried. Moving into unfinished business, jamboree request before we get into any discussion. I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion as I have a potential conflict of interest in this matter and application. So I'll turn it over to Council President, Councilor Webb. It's time.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm assuming that staff has met with the petitioner on this request and I see we have a revised map. Maybe the petitioner can go ahead and sound on that.
We did update our memorandum to include that it states food booths at Spencer Park. So that that is listed in there. And then on the vendor map or the event map, we passed, switched over where the booths would be. They would not be up against the skate park. They would be on the opposite side of those parking spaces facing the direction of the skate park. Attention, should anything in that direction. The porta potties are listed on there. We do have a covered seating area to have at least some sort of shaded space because at Shea Park, there were picnic tables, there were trees, there was some of that available. And then the, I did forget to add it in here, but the three trees in the back that we talked about, Josette, the memorial trees, if those could be buried in the city, that would be great. And then I did also bring a letter of support from the logging show as well as the president of Ridge Riders sent his support as well for removing the food vendors over.
Okay. So have we alleviated staff's concerns? It's only, at least within?
For the insurance concern, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, okay.
Question. Have you talked to the lines out there?
The mayor was at our last meeting and I spoke with him about, yes, if they do not want to move, at least at that time, the information was not moving over to Spencer. Staying in the same area would be great. And then it was thought that it actually may help and benefit them not having food directly to the food to commute. Here, give me an ensalade. So there.
Any further discussion from council?
Is there, is there agreement amongst the staff with?
Well, no, but it's not for us to decide, so.
Is it appropriate for us to ask what their concerns still are?
Well, no, my, it's still my main concern of the food debris and us not being able to clean it up because it's not a paved surface. Aftermath is a concern and what that will look like.
So I have a question as it relates to aftermath, not food.
Okay.
So one of the issues, I understand, I do not go downtown a lot during jamboree because I'm, I do some, but not a lot. I know that I have heard from a lot of people, the concern and the frustration with the fact that there is a lot of drinking which creates aftermath sometimes in a lot of places down there by the food booths and, you know, on the street. Is that potentially an issue, having the food booths where they are in the park? Or was that mostly because you've got the bars there?
Mostly because you have the bars there. The, the people that camp for softball are allowed to treat their area around their camper like it's a campsite, so they are allowed to drink there. It's not Vegas, so they won't be bringing their drinks up to the food booth area. And if the officers see that happening, they're gonna be like, you need to return back or pour it out or. So I don't foresee intermingling of drinking and food, even though the food's at Spencer. I don't see that.
So you're not gonna see that, not expecting to have that kind of?
I don't think, it hasn't been a problem for them coming out of their campsites with alcohol before. I don't think this change would make that anymore, so.
Are the food vendors limited to certain hours?
Our vendors are eight to eight, 10 to eight. Eight to eight. It is listed on our website, I apologize, I didn't listen in front of my face. It may be in my request, give me one second.
Go ahead.
And just to clarify, we're not allowing anyone to park at the skate park parking spots, right? That's gonna be a lane of travel. Okay.
And then EMS entry?
Yeah.
I have some input for you on the EMS entry. I spoke with Fire Chief Chief Brody up at the fire district and indicated to him what some of the potentials were gonna be. And as we're sitting here tonight, I do believe they will not, maybe, I know as long as they can use the alternative site, which is the new high school field for an LZ if should they need lifeline or multiple ambulances in. I'm almost certain, I don't know if you've made contact with them, but I would encourage you to make contact. So you can tell you what their plan is. I was at the meeting where it was discussed and that down there is so congested, that's just a no brainer. You don't want to bring lifeline into a situation like that. That's just a potential for a huge catastrophe. So my top of Chief Brody at the fire district, just to give you a sense of.
All right, any further discussion on council? I entertain a motion for the special event permit application from the jamboree committee. I'll make a motion then to approve special event permit application on the jamboree committee. Here is a second.
You can do a second and then I have a question, follow up question that I forgot to ask.
Are you giving me a second?
No.
I'll give you a second, Dale.
All right. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have a question. So I noticed an ad being put out there in social media, which is great. Have you had any further, have you gotten more responses, any more food vendors or product than?
We've had a few, but as far as paid invoices, no.
All right. So I have a question, so, Mr. Weller. What would it take to satisfy the cleanup in your mind? So that's not a?
I, I don't know that there's a way to do it. Because it's not a hard surface, so we'll just hopefully it works out.
Do you have kind of a plan in mind as to?
Yeah, we have the scouts, actually. They're doing the cleanup again and they did an fantastic job last year. So they've increased their volunteers. We have David Penny here with the scouts, actually. And they're going to be putting receptacles out for recycling as well.
And it's not so much the garbage cleanup because that always seems to get cleaned up. I'm talking about like the oil, whatever in the space where the cooking happens, that's what I don't know. Hopefully if they dump oil, they'll dump something to absorb it on it. Does that make sense? Like if the noodle person dumped, some vat of oil falls down, they'll have something to dump on top of it to try and absorb some of that, so it isn't just leaching in. But we won't know till we know, really.
So these, oh, no, go ahead.
So that brings a follow up question. Is there something in our contract that requires they bring the area back to initial condition?
Not in the special use permit, there really isn't. I mean, and, and that's kind of how it's worked in the past is they anticipate to do that. I mean, Bill's not here tonight, but when we've had issues, he's had teams come back and solve the issues. Because like Natalie said, one year she was on garbage duty and they had just piles of trash and they called as the volunteers that were getting a stipend to do the cleanup. And Bill actually sent teams back to fix that. So I don't have a, I don't think we're gonna have a problem with them making good on the problems. I just think we don't know every problem till it happens, right?
Yeah, I understand.
Kind of the difference.
So change venue is gonna, or area?
Yes, it's just unknown, yeah.
Thank you for your answers. You too.
Mr. Weller, do you have another question?
No, I'm, I'm satisfied.
Any more questions in discussion? Okay. We have a motion to accept the permit on the floor, is it consecutive? All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope.
Abstention here.
And one abstention, yep.
One bonus piece, if I did get information from Juana, they are offering, or they are gonna cover the shuttle fees. So we want a shuttle for a Renonia jamboree and M3. Sweet, so more designated sites.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Good luck, congratulations. It always works out, so. Thanks for your volunteering and help with it. Okay, Fourth of July request, found on page 10. Rocco Orman.
You got the request in front of you and there's also a map, which is loose on your countertop.
Any questions or discussions on the Fourth of July Great American Baths?
Did you have any discussions with that?
Yeah, so this is very similar to how they pulled it off in the past. As you know, the softball and football field down is all barricaded off for the fireworks. So this is just people with their blankets and tents and hanging out in their lawn chairs. And then they will have some vendors, they've had Dave Ice, they have a few vendors that are in that kind of run that you see there. And then they will have music, stuff plugged in at the picnic shelter. But they've done that same plan as before. And their parade, they did give us the date and time of their parade, which they didn't. So we put in for that parade request for ODOT.
Josette, I have a question for you. Will the Marcelling Yard of Browns be fenced off?
Yes.
Before the Fourth?
They're being required to fence it with a lock gate.
That whole area will be secure?
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of people.
Yeah, and that's the thing. We didn't want people figuring out, oh, there's an easy spot to pull in, pull in, pull in. And then they pack inside there and we don't know who has permission. So yeah, they will be fencing it.
Okay, any, any other questions for this application? I'd like to make a motion to approve the application.
I would be very happy to, even though I may not be here, but I am excited about it.
Okay. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Councilor Weller, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 None opposed, motion carried. Moving right into new business, staff report, 2025, 2026 utility rates.
You know, it's pretty straightforward at this point, but there's the calculations and we did have a decrease in, in water, what was it, water consumption? Yep, but less than the 5%, so stays the same. If there's any questions or?
I checked your mouth, it was good.
Okay. I knew you would.
You know, yeah. You're fail safe.
And then those, of course, those rates are in the master fee schedule.
Right.
Coming before, like coming before. A little bit of slight increase in the average bill and due to our sewer. Moving forward with the sewer project and getting that wrapped up, so. And then that was all, all straightforward and.
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, we understand the sewer loans because of assuming additional loan amounts. Also, the regulatory demands on our sewer is increasing our manpower in the sewer. So citizens need to understand that, that rate hikes state, that one, I mean. I could see doing all the testing, maybe when you're something new and getting used to it, but.
Yeah.
I don't know if we need, I mean, if anybody sat down and really looked at, really, is that necessary to do it that often? They think so.
They think so.
But anyhow, when the state comes in, when we got our new permit, they mandated more testing and that takes ten hours and more expensive testing, so.
Got a hand up, come here. Just a question for you, how much did it actually increase? When you say it increased in more man hours, how much did you see?
I think we figured like a, probably like a quarter.
Quarter FTE.
Kind of have to be out there, I think, doesn't every day?
Yeah.
Hey, sewer lab and before it was once.
Week?
Is that weekly?
I don't, it was, it was weekly for a check, but then the lab was once a month. The labs more often now.
Yeah, and he's got ridiculous reports now that he has to fill out.
Staff's done a really good job of trying to streamline the process. That they did find some computer, and we finally got a computer set up down there and, and we've got everything now. And we finally got a computer set up down there and, and we've got everything now and on the computer instead of doing stuff by hand.
And our new, yeah, the new, the, the way that the permit is set up and how we're able to discharge with the parameters. They have to collect data and put it into the system every single day. 365 days a year. And then the nice thing about that though, is that it's almost impossible for us to be out of compliance with the permit. Cause you plug your numbers in and it tells you, yes, you can discharge and this is the exact amount that you can discharge. And as long as we're filling in and going through the steps, it's almost impossible for us to get out of our, out of compliance with our DEQ permit. That being said, it is, Chris is having to put more, more work into that every day for that system to work.
How long is it taking each day?
I haven't, I actually haven't talked to him. He does have to collect like three or four data points at different times of the day and get them into that system. So.
We could ask.
Yeah, we could definitely ask him like how much.
And then he could just pay attention to it and bring you back the number.
Yeah, just so that you're aware, like.
That's, that's quite a change.
X amount of time. So.
Be the daily that.
Yeah, actually our next segment or our, our meeting is a public works staff report on, and, and there's a lot of great information in there. And I was going to ask at that time, what, how often do we have to apply for a sewer permit like that? Is it five weeks?
It'd be five years.
Five years. That's what I thought, but.
The last one though, had been 20 years before DEQ.
Wow.
Ready to reissue.
Yeah.
So it's five years if they're on top of it. It could be longer that we've run under the same permit until they're ready and have the capacity to do a new issue.
Yeah. Any, any last questions about utility rates? Anything?
Thank you, Ben.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Move right into the next segment, which I just talked about, Public Works Department update.
So this is actually quarter one and two. We missed quarter one. None of us remembered missing it, but then when the Public Works Committee said, where was the quarter one report? And I was like, oh my gosh, we didn't get one. So this is everything for the whole year so far.
Wow. I was really impressed. I mean, there's a lot of work. We, our crew has been busy and doing good work and. 10, 10 manholes repaired, which is going to really help the INI up on the hill. I mean, everything we talked about in the last five years is coming to fruition. It's a, it's a really good report, in my opinion.
How many manholes total?
How many manholes total?
200, something.
15?
We've got about 280 manholes.
Were there about 45 that needed?
That we originally did. We, we did some with the team that trained our guys how to do it. And then our guys are putting a plan of how many they can tackle a year to get all through it.
They're not all.
It's like, no, they're not all bad. And it's probably like a seven to 10 year process, working so many in a year. You have to wait for the water table. So there's only a window of a season when you can do it. The water table has to be high because of the pressure grout cures with moisture on the outside, on the, on the land side of the manhole. So can't do it in the summer.
And they, I think they identify like certain manholes, like all of a sudden, this one's a real problem. And I, yeah, I've seen some amazing videos of literally a waterfall of water coming out and they got in there and fixed it and stopped it. So I mean, I don't know what hundreds of gallons an hour stopped by just identifying one manhole that had a serious problem. So, and Jonathan is on that. That's his, his bread and butter. So.
He holds the manhole Bible.
Yeah.
Susan, did you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of things. So first of all, I agree with the mayor. This is, it's a wonderful report. It's not just a number of things down that describes it. And I, I truly appreciate, I think, public, public, too. A, on the, on the, on the, what are A's? There's only a couple of them. It was the crack ceiling and drainage ditch on Ivy and Heather. The others all had identifying.
The Woody.
Oh, because there's yearly. So I don't know.
What is A?
I just.
Maybe it's just. Hmm. Well, with the boy, flower baskets and banners, I think those are, it's gotta be like a K, auxiliary, like not happening all the time.
Sure.
Happening like one in a moment.
Oh, good.
And I'll, I'll get it, I'll get a detail of what the A means at a time.
We can do that. Okay. And I really, again, I appreciate all the little commentary and then also his little outlook that was wonderful. That's, that's exactly what we should be, how our reports should go. I like that. Thank you.
I bet it is annually because there, there was only one thing with a Y. So I bet he mixed and didn't realize the key was a Y and he meant A. I'll ask. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on the report? Okay. Thank you. Move right into ordinances and resolutions. Public hearing tonight. I'll open up this public hearing at 7:07 PM. On the City of Renone fiscal year 2025, 2026, city budget as presented by staff. We will now take public testimony. Each person will have, be allowed five minutes. After everyone has had an opportunity to speak, we will close the public hearing and deliberate. The following are the rules of order. No person shall speak without first being recognized by the chair and stating his or her full name and residence address. No person shall be disorderly, abusive, or disruptive of the orderly conduct of the hearing. There shall be no audience demonstration such as applause, cheering, display, signs, or conduct disruptive of the hearing. Such conduct may be grounds for immediate termination of this hearing by the council. No person shall present a relative, immaterial, or unduly repetitious oral argument. The mayor, members of the council, and with approval of the chair, the city attorney and any other officer or employee of the city may, may question any person who submits oral argument. The council may set time limitations for this proceeding, but in doing so must provide proponents and opponents equal time to present arguments. The time limit will be set for 30 minutes. We will now take public testimony. In order to use our time efficiently, you are requested not to repeat testimony and/or read testimony already submitted in writing. Prior to addressing the council, each person shall come to the podium and state his or her name and address, which will become public record. After everyone has had the opportunity to speak, we will close the public hearing and begin deliberations. Are there any proponents who wish to speak in favor of acceptance of the City of Renone fiscal year 2025, 2026 city budget as presented by staff? If not, are there any opponents who wish to speak against the acceptance of the City of Renone fiscal year 2025, 2026 city budget as presented by the staff? Okay. If there is anyone who is neither for nor against the acceptance of the City of Renone fiscal year 2025, 2026 city budget as presented by staff, who would like to make a comment this time? Is there any rebuttal from the staff? Okay. Well, this concludes the public testimony and oral argument portion of this hearing. I will, will now close this public hearing at 7:10 PM. We will now begin deliberation. I'll turn it over to.
I guess. Yeah.
Staff like to.
Well, well. So there was one small correction that I noticed when I was analyzing everything. And that was what I have in the staff report here was just the formula was, didn't capture the $2,500 library donation. So you guys, you guys adopted.
Friends of the library.
Yeah, from the friends. So yeah, that was, I just had to make that.
Did all council members see that?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm all. But it was added now to the general fund.
Yeah, it's great. And we had one other thing come up.
Two things come up.
Certain two things. Yeah. So in the, in the presented budget, there was $5,000 put into equipment purchase line item in the water and sewer facility reserved. And that was intended to purchase a zero turn mower for parks so that Public Works could take tractor that parks is currently using. Cause theirs is.
Dying.
Out of commission. So rather than go buy a new one, for them, we decided it would be a lot cheaper to do the zero turn. So that's, we've got some prices for that and that's what we're doing. The other thing that came up, in addition to that was a trailer to move it around. So we're going to need an extra $3,000 or so to purchase that trailer so that Tim can take it to the lake and the dog park and all places around town and not have to bomb down Bridge Street on his zero turn. And then Jeff came to us last week, very excited about a possible new back, well, newish backhoe from the county. They are going to be auctioning off. Originally we thought we could just purchase it straight from them, but then we found out when he actually went back and reread the email that they're going to take them to auction. But if they don't sell there, he has a proposal that, and we've, so we were asking for an additional, total additional $30,000 split between those two funds, those reserve funds to cover the trailer and possibly the backhoe if it works out. If we can't get it for, for the 25,000, then we're not going to get it. And he doesn't even know for sure. If it goes at auction, which probably will. But that was there. And I think he talked to you about it a little bit.
Yes.
It was.
Do you know when the auction is, Andy?
I don't know. I think it's fairly soon.
Can you, can you, can't do that tonight though? Want to change the equipment out?
It should be.
No.
But it's the same.
It's 10% of the fund, only 15,000 in each, in most reserve funds.
How much are we spending in those reserve funds though? Already?
Not very much.
I'm sure it is.
I don't think so. I don't think it's over the threshold.
There I get it here.
We're $400,000 in there.
But you're moving them to different line items to spend, or was already in that line?
No, we're just increasing that line. But it's less than 10% of the contingency. Yeah. No, we're.
I didn't hear about this.
We talked about it today.
Thought that it was tonight.
So where were you planning?
You don't have to.
Where were you planning on taking those funds?
From the reserve funds for water and sewer.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Cause the backhoe would be used in water and sewer.
Yeah.
They'd be split in the car.
Yeah. And then if we don't, you know, if it doesn't go through, then.
That money just sits there.
It just sits there and rolls into next year.
Wouldn't be buying anything else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We won't let him spend it on something else.
Go ahead, Dennis.
What's Counselor Norman's assessment of the backhoe? Do you have any?
It will upgrade ours without going into the computer era. And it will have an extended hole to help them reach a little more.
And it's.
More versatile.
We don't have.
The one he wants says the thumb, it's not the extended.
Go wheel drive and.
Yeah.
What's going to ask?
Got less hours and it's a few years newer.
Six way bucket.
Yeah. He's, he's pretty jazzed. He was pretty bummed out when he found out that we were.
He can upgrade it. We would sell ours so that money would be re-cubbed.
Yeah, we'd probably get most of it back. So.
And it might be a push then.
Close to it.
Yeah.
If we can get it.
But it has to go to the auction first.
Yeah.
What the county told him.
The commissioners that want it to go to the auction. They don't want to interagency sell it. They want to see if they can get more. If they can't get more, or if we participate in the auction with what we can afford to spend and get it, great. Or if it doesn't even sell, then we do an interagency agreement to sell it to us directly. Most of the agencies are more willing to do that because we share and kind of pass down. It's like handbeads, your big brother had this and then you fit and wear it for four years and then you pass it down. For some reason they want, they have two backhoes they want to send to auction and they have a new one they just got. So. Think if you have the money to get a new one at the county, you would let your little brother buy the one for a good deal, but no, no go. Maybe they're, maybe they're counting on the money from the auction to pay their payment on the new one. I don't know what's going on, but that's where we're at.
Okay. Any other questions about the budget or discussion?
I guess I do know the dealers, government agencies can get special prices. So when you're looking at the zero turn mower.
Yeah, we've got.
We did. We get, we have it. Yeah. We do get the, the discount.
And we've got like four, well, actually we ended up with like six.
Yeah, six quotes.
We did our homework.
And we did our ratings and what the parts are made with.
All the things. I know we're just.
But we do pick out good equipment.
Just tell me it's not a John Deere.
It is not a John Deere.
They were too spent. They were too expensive.
Too spending.
What is it?
The, the Gravely is the one we're going with.
Cowas stocky.
They're like the landscaper's dream zero turn. They have all really robust materials, no flimsy plastic, anything.
And a bagger.
I don't know if we're going with the bagger. Cause you can go 13 miles an hour. So he should mow it quick enough and short enough that we never need to bag it. And we can always use the big one to do the spring cut too before. So. Tractor spring cut if we had to.
You shouldn't have to. I have one. Pay with it.
So.
Go ahead, Dale.
Just a little clarification. Go. You're talking about purchasing this backhoe and we're talking budget.
We're just wanting to move it into the line item on the off chance that for the price, we can purchase it. If you don't move it into the line item, then we'd have to come back with supplemental. But since you haven't adopted the budget, we thought it'd be smart to ask you this time. We ask you after the fact.
Well, it's not contract services. Is it on that line? What is what?
Equipment purchase.
Equipment purchase.
Equipment purchase. Okay. So then we're given technically, we're given the approval for you guys to purchase at this time to attempt to purchase that backhoe. I mean, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, I mean, the way the reserves are set up. If, if during the fiscal year, you guys came up with something you needed to do, you would come to council and say, we need to move this money here to attempt to do this purchase.
Yeah.
And, and we're just doing this because we haven't adopted now.
Right.
Okay.
But that would be in a supplemental form.
Right.
It would.
Another, yeah, we would just be coming back at a later time. It does the same thing. It's just.
And so I'm supposed to write this down and put it in the motion?
Oh, you're making the motion?
Well.
Well, we would just tell them what the number changed to, right?
I don't even know if you have to be that specific. You could probably just say what could change.
I have no idea what the changes are. So I think maybe for me to list them out.
Just move.
I don't know what any of the things.
We really don't know what you're going to purchase that backhoe for.
Well, no, we.
If we can't get it for 25.
If we can't get it for 25,000 or under.
That's it.
That's it. Yeah.
And 15 for a flavor?
No.
No, we're asking five.
I'm asking to increase each of those line items by $15,000.
Total of 30,000. Total of $30,000 in changes.
Because the trailer is going to be an extra 3,500 bucks of the 10 that you, that the Budget Committee approved already for the month.
Because we know the tractor driving back and forth between parks is one thing, zero turn, that's just waste of fuel and hours and wear and tear on it when he can just load it on a trailer, on his truck, tow it to the next place, offload it, load it.
Yeah.
The longevity.
I understand that.
And we didn't think of that when we came to you in budget, like, oh, a trailer for it.
But I don't have line items in front of me here in numbers, so to make-
30,000 total, so it would be, where is it?
1700-00.
Increase it by $15,000.
15.
Sewer facility reserve and sewer facility reserve and by 15 in water facility reserve.
The same line item number.
Same line item.
Same line item.
One in sewer and one in water.
Right, and water and one in sewer.
Okay.
Does it decrease each contingency?
By the same amount.
And decrease the what?
Contingency by the same amount.
Contingency, yeah.
It's the contingency line item number. For Dale, he wants the numbers.
9998. Dash 00.
And what's that one?
Contingency.
Oh, it's contingency, okay.
But contingency is in both of those funds.
All right.
Okay, Dale.
I think I got it.
Does it change your appropriations page, though? It doesn't, right?
No. Well, I guess it'll change the contingency amount. I'll just have to update it. Are we?
In water and sewer?
Yeah. I know some, have to edit it tomorrow.
Unless somebody else wants to make that. Oh, okay. Okay. I'll move to accept the fiscal year 2025.
You're adopting the resolution?
Oh, we're doing the resolution, all right.
Top of page 18, Dale, it'll help you really well. Resolution 2025.
All right, I'll move to re-adopt resolution number 202502-02. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Vernonia adopting the fiscal year budget 2025-2026, making appropriations, imposing the taxes and categorizing the, categorizing the taxes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, with the following corrections. The addition of the $2,500 from the Friends of the Library into the general fund. And increasing the line item 1700-00 in sewer and water up to $15,000 each.
Reserves.
Reserve, sewer and water reserves. And decreasing the line item 9998-00, which is the contingency reserve, by the same amount.
Good job, so moved. Is there a second? Second, seconded by Counselor Norman. All those in favor approving this resolution?
Aye.
Aye. Unopposed, motion carried. Congratulations, City of Vernonia. I'd also like to, this time, re-recognize the staff, how they presented the budget to us, the committee. It was just unbelievably fluid this year, and we did it in one meeting, but, you know, there was a whole lot of work that led up to that meeting, and Angie gave us each the budget a week prior, and we read it. We just didn't red stamp it, you know? And we studied it and asked any questions to Angie before the meeting, and so, and there were other things that she started doing last year which really helped with the process, so thanks again. I mean, you know, great job. Thank you. We're lucky.
Yeah.
Okay, any correspondence?
We have-
We got another roof.
Master fee.
Oh, I'm sorry, master fee.
It's in there.
Yeah, thank you. Resolution 2025-03, master fee schedule.
Stephanie, do you have one that has the updated dates?
I presented different things. Okay, so we'll have, oh, sorry, the 17th, it's the 16th. But I also wanted to outline the different changes for you guys. We don't update it like we used to. We adopt a new one every year, or multiple times a year if needed. So you already saw the utility billing rates a few hundred percent, but they're in your report.
And they should, they should be technically the same in the master fee schedule. We went over it three times.
Yes.
They are.
Okay. Dale Chang, Dale.
To clarify, since I didn't specify the date, the only date changes on the resolution were to the, it's today's date, not tomorrow's date. Everything else is fine.
It says commencing July 1, 2024.
It's signed-
Oh, yes, sorry.
2024?
Yes, the date of the year.
Oops.
Everything else is correct. The, let's see, so for the rates under administrative fees, there was an increase in all staff hours rates as they are fully loaded rates, not overloaded loaded. Also, an increase to attorney and planning services, which is a pass-through, we're not making money on it. Then also, the under administrative fees cabin in Vernonia, as we now have the scout cabin, we're adopting those fees. It's $120 per four hours, $30 for each additional hour, as well as a $50 cleaning fee, which would be significantly more staff time now. And under planning fees, we are, for the first time, implementing a fee for floodplain, floodplain development permits for new development. So that's when somebody's building a structure due to all the new FEMA regulations and the significant staff time, we're hoping to pay for a little bit of that time, and that's $300. Minor floodplain development permits still are going to be without charge, so we're going to eat that cost. It's more compliance versus more work. Then we're also, under cemetery, we're no longer getting headstone installations. Ben can elaborate on that if you feel like it's necessary, but due to the immense staff efforts that it takes to install those, we're no longer doing that. That's all right.
It will be, later after the fiscal year, we'll be doing a small update to the cemetery rules and regulations. Resolution to remove, remove that from, from the cemetery rules and regulations. And if you have any questions about that, I don't want to get into a whole thing, but if you're curious, if anybody's curious to while, we're-
They're curious. Just tell them the scenario that happened.
Yeah. So what happens is, if you go to the funeral home, you know, Jeff Hoyt, and you order a headstone, it includes delivery and installation. And if anything goes wrong, it's all covered. And the only thing staff does is gets a call from the installers saying, hey, we're installing this headstone, and I run up and put a flag there with the name on it. Well, in this day and age, people, they do the jazz hands routine on the Googler, and they find these, because in Oregon, there's, there's no independent sellers. It's kind of like car dealerships. You can't buy a headstone direct from a stone manufacturer in Oregon, under state law. So they get these places out of state, Texas, California, North Carolina, and they order a stone, and they think it's cheaper, but then they pay three times as much as that in trucking, you know, shipping charges across the country. And then freight trucks can't make it up to the cemetery, so we got to drop it off at Public Works, and then Jeff has to get involved. I'm talking to all these people on the phone. We're charging $200 for a headstone installation. We've already lost money by the time it even shows up. And then it's a huge pain for staff, and we're just done doing that. So I, that's cutting it out. I know it's kind of weird that we would do it, but in the master fee schedule before we change the resolution, but that will be coming. It just is not worth our time and effort. You need to go to the funeral home or one of the other monument companies that's licensed in Oregon. One, we're not losing money, and two, in the, you're saving money in the long run, even if you think you can find something cheaper online. It's just not the case, so.
So who oversees the placement of it, then?
This funeral home or the monument that's certified in Oregon. These people were buying like a $300 headstone in Texas, paying $500 to have it trucked here, paying us $200, but it's 500 pounds, so the backhoe has to, you have to put it on forks, and then that's not safe for our guys because we don't have the equipment to install the huge ones to be trying to level it, and it just wasn't working. And most people, when someone, when they make arrangements, that's all part of it. It's the people that want to put one after the fact or ahead of something and think they're getting a deal, but really, we were losing money because Ben would spend hours with them, like, okay, you got to send it to this address, you know, and lots of phone calls, and that's what he means. The $200 wasn't even covering before it got here. And then him and Mitch and Jeff are trying to put it in, so that's time tail.
And then, and that's, you know, OM is, I mean, they have, it's an amazing, if you ever get the chance to see it, they got this little three-wheeled tractor with claws, and then literally just dig the hole, and they can set it in, they can lift it out if they need to re-level the ground, like, we're just, yeah.
We're not equipped.
Yeah, we're not equipped for it. There's professionals out there, and it comes, like I said, if you go to the funeral home and order a headstone, deliver and installation is included. It's, you know, it's a way better deal, it's better for our people, and, and the other, the part that I wouldn't got, I, one of my regular moments of going and raging with Joseph was, the gentleman thought he was getting a better deal, but at the end, he calls me back and yells at me after I told him just to go to the funeral home. And then he ended up spending like twice as much as it would have been at the funeral home, installation included, and then he's mad at me. And I, and I told, and I told him ahead of time, don't, you should just call the funeral home, you know? Don't do, don't do it, but he did it anyways, and then he was mad at me for, for it, so.
The reality.
And the situation.
Right.
Sorry.
One final change, the, oddly enough, under airport fees, the, so this airport park post space, when it's the off-season, it gets, that tenant pays rent. It was never adopted, it was always in the contract. So we're remedying that now, and it will be the space rent and the electricity. So they're already paying it, we're just putting it in the schedule. It's been that way for 15 years.
Okay, any other questions, discussions on the master fee schedule for next year? This year and next?
I'm looking for a motion. I'll move that we adopt resolution number 2025-03. Resolution providing for the adoption of new and revised master fee schedule and rescinding resolution 2024-08A.
Okay, couple changes.
The corrections to the dates.
Corrections.
The dates aren't necessary, but you can list it if you would like. It's a Scrivener's error.
The Scrivener's error is on the resolution as presented on page 20.
Okay, so moved. Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Wagner? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Resolution passed. Okay, is there any correspondence? City Administrator?
Well, question about, follow-up from last, the last meeting for the lead organ cities. I will not be here and able to attend. We need to register if we want to register soon, and particularly if you want to get a scholarship so it doesn't cost the city anything, you just have to fill it out. They ask if permission is needed from, or the council, and if you've gotten it, I don't know that it is, but I, again, I highly recommend somebody go, it's pretty amazing.
What are the dates again, Susan?
October 2.
October, okay.
2/34.
Is anyone hunting season? Is anyone out?
Yeah.
What are they thinking?
I'm not going to be able to make it, so.
Okay.
Thank you for inquiring on that. I did see that email, too, so. Okay, Joseph, City Administrator report.
Okay, so I still haven't had any back and forth from DEQ. I keep sending them emails, asking them when they're going to test, and we're on their timeline. We're just living in their world. O.ADA project brown construction will be completing the ramps. They've started, they did start Park and Adams after I wrote this, but that's also going to be completed before they leave. And they're planning on doing the paving, wasn't today, but tomorrow. And they will be fencing their yard during the summer as they will be moving to Forest Grove to do Highway 8 work. They still will be making concrete, using that yard as a batch plant for their Forest Grove work, so there will still be activity there, just not out in the right of way. The senior exercise path is completed, and so I sent pictures and a thank you to Claire at Roundhouse Foundation, which is where we got Rachel Organ applied and got the grant for the equipment. So there's a dip bench, a arm rotation, a core exerciser, a regular bench just for people who want to meander the path and sit and look at the park, and then a kind of like rowing apparatus. So those are all in there, and those will be barricaded around as well during jamboree so that we don't have any mishaps with any trailers not seeing the stuff, because they are more natural colors to blend in with Spencer Park, so they're sometimes not as visible with the greens and vejas. And then Eric DeWitt is really excited to put on a great show for the community for the Fourth of July, and you guys already approved the Intercultural Society's application to do the food vendors, the relay races and music at Spencer Park prior to the show. Upcoming, we are closed this Thursday in observance of Juneteenth and Friday, July 4th, in observance of Independence Day. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Yes, I have one. When is Brown returning to work in September some?
Yes, I believe they're coming back in September. That's how long they think it will take them to get the Highway 8, and then they will be doing the two roundabouts that are just before you come into Forest Grove. Those also have to have ADA ramps along those roundabouts.
And then they're going to come back to Vernonia? And then where are they going to be working when they come back?
So then they'll just be doing the downtown core, and then they have Cherry and Heather.
Okay.
Where there's cross, the crosswalk on Cherry will get one, and then Heather has a sidewalk that comes all the way to where the little gazebo, the kids used to catch the bus at the gazebo, and that will also have an ADA ramp.
We're all done?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
I just got, I guess, some suggestions at Spencer Park. Now that the stadium's gone, maybe we should make that drive straight through there to the track instead of having to go to the right or left around the shack.
Straight through there? You mean like line up the?
So as you drive past the skate park, just keep going straight and go right onto the track and go right or left.
So the only thing is then you lose the, any parking you have there because?
We're going to gain it in the other spot that's being blocked off for entrance.
I'll look into it. I, I don't know how.
Take a lot of confusion and jig jogging around to get there.
Yeah.
Because then we would have more or less one spot in and out of there instead of two.
So you don't, you want to close the one that goes to the left behind the snack shack?
Yes.
Okay.
And then close that other one to the right that's clear over by that pond.
And make that parking or?
Make that parking.
Okay. Well, I will draft something up and present it to Parks Committee and bring it back to you guys.
I, I think that would make, and even for emergency access, it's a straight shot right out to the football field.
Yeah.
Instead of around and.
There may be a little bit of expense in like rock. Because it is that really rough pit run as parking, which it wouldn't be able to be if we make it a through lane, but.
There's a curb there too.
Yeah, we'd have to cut the track curb.
Curb off, but I think that would make that whole accessing easier.
Yeah, that we Parks Committee, so what's weird is a long time ago, Parks Committee wanted it to be, well, they wanted a lot of things, but they wanted ballards all the way around the football field and drive like a one-way and then take that grass out and make parking back by that, the three trees, basically, a log with face front parking along there. So I might revisit that with Parks Committee and just talk about an overall plan.
And then maybe see about maybe, maybe making a rear entrance to it to kind of alleviate some of it up front.
You mean from the Lagoon Road?
Yeah.
So there is a bank there. I, I don't know what, we'd have to kind of dig and test what the makeup of is and how much, and then kind of direct people so they didn't make it, there might be, yeah, okay. I'll look into that.
And then the snack shack down there, the screens for the bird blocks for the attic ventilation, some of them have been knocked out.
Oh, okay.
They're getting up there and making nests. So I think that's going to ruin the building.
Okay. We can get those redone, let the baby birds fly and then do it.
Yes, but just bringing it to attention.
Okay.
Thank you, Donald.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else? Okay.
Are we on?
We're, we're, thank you, Josep.
Yes.
Items on the mayor and councils. I have one thing. And our project that Donald or Counselor Norman and I took on last year, the new welcome to Vernonia signs complete. And it turned out better than I expected, but I wanted to thank, it was a pleasure working with Donald and many other people in the community and, and I'm really, really happy with it and it looks really good. Last little thing we're going to have to do is get a light moved on it and the photocell moved. And once that's done, it'll, it'll be all done. So. That project's done. That's all I have. Dale?
It's kind of informational. I think some of you have heard this before. You know, our, our Dewey Pool isn't looked upon favorably by ODF and W because of fish passage. But I think we really need that pound home.
The cooling.
The cooling, it, it was, the numbers this year were just incredible of what that pond does for the Nahalem River. We had that heat stretched there and that was before the pool was in. Remember, we had those 90 degree days. Everybody was clamoring through the pool. Rock Creek was lethal at the water plant. It stayed lethal all the way to the mouth. Nahalem was like 77. When we put that pool in, we're seeing up to four degrees cooling. If that pool would have been in, Rock Creek would have never reached lethal temperature from the water plant to the mouth and it would have cooled the Nahalem for a ways. Well, probably would have kept it a little lethal all the way to the Green Bridge on, on that day. It's just, it's just really, even on a cold, like we had cold nights here the last few nights and I just happened to take samples this afternoon. And I mean, it, it's 60 degrees at the mouth of Rock Creek this afternoon at almost 3 o'clock in the afternoon. And it was almost five degrees differential between it and the Nahalem. But then it leads to me, which Mrs. Shalow is going to be really interested in, into my second comment. Guess who got attacked by a dog today? Lockdown, fake temperatures, guy is down there with crawdad trap and he was paying attention to that. I didn't see his dog. His dog didn't see me until we both met and then the fangs came out. I don't know how I avoided getting bit. The dog got slapped at the side of my foot and the head. And a big hay, but yeah, not on a leash, just come blindsided me. And we had a little discussion. I told him the dogs are supposed to be on a leash. He had a leash, but he just didn't have the dog on the leash. So. And in doing these temperature surveys, that's, that has been one of the things that I always run into is people's dogs off leash, especially down there at the Confluence. People want to let their dog run and, you know, there's small kids and others, but you know, a stranger shows up. Sometimes dogs are protective and, and, and then I do it down at the Green Bridge and, you know, every couple of times down there it got a little hairy. People don't expect somebody else being there. And then, I mean, we all like our dogs, but to Amy's point, it's getting to be a real problem in this town. I know the brown dog she's talking about. I also know of a pit bull that went after my dad in his own yard here within the last year. Luckily he had the rake in his hand. So. I want to reinforce that we're going to do something that's entitled three in the parks.
Yeah.
I don't know if we need to have a workshop and look at this further, make sure we're covering all the bases.
I think so. The, the wording we're, we're aiming to do is copy Hillsborough's, which is pretty stringent on what you're, on the teeth that it gives law enforcement, that it gives the other citizens to expect. And so it's pretty tough, good leverage. So that's what we're working on bringing back to you guys in the parks to adopt.
That's not really going to have an impact on people who have their dogs just loose on their, on their body.
That's already been addressed with Roger and the law enforcement. Like, so one example is the, the dogs at the hardware store. They regularly come down here and just mill about. The minute they step on the sidewalk, that owner can get a ticket. So that's what Sergeant Carnahan now knows and now is going to have his officers enforcing. So.
And you know, the, the guy, the guy's a nice guy.
Yeah, everybody is.
He got surprised. I, I mean, I ended up petting a dog afterwards, you know? But it doesn't stop that initial conflict. And.
And so.
Heard other people, you know, loose dogs walking on the trail. I, I don't think people realize the liability they're looking at. Your dog runs in front of one of them cyclists and they upend and break bones. You're paying lost wages and damages. It's, it's, they're going to set you back or your insurance company. And guess what your insurance company is going to do with your dog?
Yeah. So one of the things that Roger wanted us to do that we're going to be putting in, hopefully with Scott, putting an article in the paper, this is now the new normal. And you will get a ticket and this is what your expectation and responsibility is with your animal. So that nobody can say, I didn't know.
Yeah, you did.
So.
And yeah, and I think we, we need to put something out educational before we come down with a hammer, but.
Yeah.
It's, it's getting out of hand.
Yeah.
Thanks Dale. Susan, you have something?
Yeah, not exactly city related, kind of. Friday, I am retired at 3:00 PM.
Retired?
I'm retired.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you. Just want all y'all to know.
Congratulations.
Join the crowd.
Well, I then head out to Durin, Colorado immediately. So it's not, relax. That's okay.
Anybody else? Okay, well, action item summary.
Okay, so I'm going to get with waste management and just talk about building a list and some sort of informative campaign of what can and can't be dropped off there and for the citizens. And then talk to them about the glass and the language barrier. I'm going to be working with Scott and getting an article in the paper so, so that the citizens are informed of what the police will be starting to do with loose dogs. We're still working on the park stuff for in parks so that we have leverage that way if it's on city property as well. We're going to try and get Chris to do a ballpark estimate of the additional time he's spending on the new testing regime. And then talk with Parks Committee about changing the routing of the ingress egress at Spencer Park and fixing the screen blocks for the birds that are missing at snack shack. Anything I missed?
Okay. Everyone have a safe and, and wonderful Fourth of July and we'll, we'll see you next month. I'll, thank you for attending tonight. I'll adjourn this meeting at 7:53 PM. Meeting adjourned.